Adam Clark, I guess roll call somewhat kind of like just a report where we're calling from.
Okay, roll call Mayor Garrett.
I'm here calling from Oakland County Lathrop Village.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Here, calling in from Harbor Springs, Michigan Emmett County.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Here, calling in from Oakland County Lathrop Village.
Councilmember Sadiq.
Hello, I'm here calling from Lathrop Village, Oakland County, Michigan.
And councilmember Stalin. Madam Mayor, you have a quote.
Thank you. Um, so first up on the agenda is proposed mixed use development, the deed restriction, which they're not going to be in our meeting today, but this is basically about, I'm sorry. Cheryl, go ahead.
You're doing so good.
We'll take it thunder.
Okay, and I'll probably ask Suzie to join in on this as well, but there was a tentative proposal in regards to the redevelopment of the Lathrop School property next door. And they were indicating it would be a mixed use with approximately, I think it was 180 units.
190 units and just over six, between 6 and 10,000 square feet of commercial.
And so they're still in those talks, but as it relates to the city, the park that is adjacent to that property is also part of what they were proposing as the redevelopment. The issue with that land, however, is that the Southfield Public School District has a deed restriction on it that limits it to only be used for recreational purposes. So regardless of if it's going to be this development or another one, most of them are proposing to use that park property. So it might be advisable for you to consider asking the Southfield Public Schools to release that deed restriction. So at this point, it will be helpful if we had a conversation around that portion of the releasing the deed restriction. And if there is a consensus from council, then Scott can be directed to draft that request and you can have it on your February council meeting to vote on.
Yeah, I can't think of any reason why we wouldn't want to do that. It doesn't mean we're acting on getting rid of the property. That'd be a whole other discussion for the development, but you know, it seems like we could at least entertain getting rid of the deed restrictions so that we have the flexibility in the future to do something with that property if we need to.
Yeah, makes sense. It's two parts. You're right.
Yeah, I agree. No reason not to.
Okay, so with that, I think we can move forward and Scott can initiate that draft.
Yeah, I can do that. You know, the only thing which I don't anticipate, and Suzie and I talked about this when she first presented it, is that if they don't agree to release the deed restriction, then obviously we are limited by what we can do with that parcel. I don't anticipate that they would want the property back, given that it's no longer a school, but, but yeah, they may, they may want some money to do that too. So just keep that in mind as well.
They may want some money to do what, Scott?
To release the property restrictions because as it was deeded to the city, it was, it was to be used only for the association with the school or as a park. Because that originally was Southfield Public Schools property, the whole parcel was their property.
So are you saying money from us or money from the developer?
Money from the city right now. Take the developer completely out of the equation.
Yeah, because we would have, we would have to sell that property to any development and then they, they may want some of that money.
I got it. I got it. Nevermind.
Can we get clarification? So just so we're clear, and I have two questions. We're talking about anti-Lathrop School to, you know, release that deed or we're talking about the park in the back?
Talking about.
Talking about the park.
Park in the back. So yeah, there was originally, as part of the, the the property transaction between Southfield Public Schools and I think it was Cernow that purchased the school.
Yeah.
That, that Cernow didn't want the parcel in back and the school left it to the city to be used as either school or a park. So there was, there were a couple provisions in the deed that could have reverted back if, if the deal went south between Cernow and Southfield, that that part, that parcel would have reverted back to the city of Southfield. Because that transaction is completed, that condition is extinguished, but, but the one that remains is the restriction on what the property is to be used for. So it's essentially, we'd be purchasing that or requesting that Southfield rescind this deed and, and issue a new deed without any sort of deed restrictions, which essentially is we're purchasing the property from Southfield Public Schools.
Okay, and what kind of sauce, what kind, what kind of costs are associated with that?
Well, that's kind of, we're not sure yet because if it's simply just the recording cost and the, you know, it's $30 to record a deed.
Okay.
I, we haven't had any discussions with Southfield Public Schools as to what, what they would want for that parcel. Again, it's essentially valueless to them because they don't have a school there anymore and they,
Yeah.
there's, it's not really developable from, from their standpoint, so.
Yeah, well, Scott, don't we, don't we technically own it? Because didn't we pay them a dollar for it?
Yeah, technically we own it, but it's, it's subject to those conditions. So again, if we wanted the parcel free and clear, they have every right to say, well, you know, that parcel is now worth X number of dollars, whatever it may be.
Right.
Yeah.
So what's the approach from the legal perspective? You're just going to ask them to reissue the deed to Lathrop? Based on?
Let them know that, I mean, we don't necessarily have any development. Right now, we have some conceptual developments, but you know, the city can, we can engage in discussions that, you know, the deed restrictions right now are handcuffing the city with respect to how to develop that property. And so asking them to remove those deed restrictions so that we can, you know, open up our options, so to speak, with respect to redevelopment.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Should probably not let them know we have like an interested party, right?
But we, I mean, we, I mean, technically we don't, I mean, we have someone that has an idea what they want to do with it, but they don't even have a letter of intent from the property owner yet. So at this point, to say that it's anything more than an idea, I mean, we've, over the years, we've had a lot of ideas and nothing has come to fruition. So.
Right.
We don't want to put our, put all our eggs in one basket and, and hope that this plan is going to come true, but it does, it does limit us with what we can do with going forward, even if it's for a different development possibility.
Yeah. That's why I was asking, what was the approach? Are we gonna, you know, give them the, the full sauce? Or are we going to just say, hey, you know, we want to get our control back in case we have some developments?
I think the approach will be to tell them whatever is necessary in order to move this forward. So.
Yeah, okay.
And we have, we're tentatively scheduled for their next study session and meeting in March.
Yeah.
Um, next up is the RFQ for the Real Estate Professional Services Houses, House in the Woods.
Mayor and Council, if you recall, this property, we've been trying to do something with for some time and before I even arrived here. And that's the House in the Woods property at 19600 Force Drive. And that RFQ was issued December 22nd. It was posted on the state website as well, city and social media. The closing was this past Friday. We received a response from Hughes Real Estate and Property Management Services. And I believe Ms. Hughes is in the audience if you want to ask her any specific questions. That was the only proposal received. And in response, she was indicating 8% commission on the listing of selling, 900 for coordinating the real estate transaction closing, if applicable, and 900 for listing the property on multiple platforms. Since it was only the one response, I did the evaluation of scoring just by myself, so.
And that, the 900, and I'm sorry, make sure I see it. The money is not up front. That's just in the closing cost, right?
I'm sorry, didn't I, I didn't hear your question?
That's in the clo, the, the fees are all in the closing cost, not upfront, right?
She's here if you want.
Oh, she's online? Okay, sorry. Didn't realize that.
Well, that's whoever wants the answer. So that's the question I have.
Yeah. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Hi, thank you for having me. All the costs are at closing. And I wanted to, if I could provide some clarification. Hughes Real Estate and Property Management Services is my property management company. However, when I act as a Realtor, I act under Lynn and Associates, who is my broker. So when I register with bid net direct, I did that under my property management company. But I do also look for real estate opportunities. And so when I do, again, I act as a Realtor under my broker Lynn and Associates. I just wanted to make that clarification.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that.
So Natasha, do you have expertise in selling properties like these?
I work with a broker who has a long history, almost 30 years. And so what I may lack, she knows, and she will be overseeing the project with me. So I will say yes, because the broker has the experience.
Of selling large pieces of property like that?
Yes, commercial property as well as the residential and land. Yes.
Okay. Thank you. And then also there was something that Lori Bell sent that I found really interesting, but I can't find the letter yet.
Yeah, she was basically upset about the fact, kind of the way we treated her over the last couple of years with not really giving her any direction and all the time that she spent to, you know, do the RFQ. And, you know, we, we were very wishy washy in terms of what we wanted to do and, and, you know, I think she thought she was the, still the Realtor, and I think she was upset that, you know, we were going out for another RFQ without, you know, having even spoken to her. So she bowed out.
So is that her observation of us, us being wishy washy, or we feel?
No, that's my, that's my observation of us. That was her observation of us, but I, but it, I didn't disagree with anything she said in her letter. I mean, we were constantly changing up and, you know, we didn't really provide her with any direction because we didn't have direction ourselves. So.
Right, right.
So she was, she was upset, I think rightfully so.
Yeah, but I think we were upfront, weren't we? We said, hey, we don't have a level of expertise here. That's why we tried to bring her in. And you're right, we didn't, we didn't incorporate those, you know, points to say, go do this and that, because we were at a learning curve also, right?
Yeah, well, we kept changing our mind and dropping the ball. Yeah, I.
No, I get it. I get it. Okay.
Um, so I guess my question was, was it communicated to her about where we were, what we were about to do before, you know, her finding out that we were going back out to bid?
Yes, and to clarify, the last RFQ was to find a developer builder for the property. And essentially that, we never reached a point of entering into a contract with her in regards to that. And since that time, council said to just put it on the market. And when the RFQ was issued, I sent a copy to her to make certain that she was aware that we were going in this direction.
Okay, so back to, to you, Bruce. So if the goal was to get a developer, which I can only say that wasn't done. So I'm not sure, I, I thought it was more or less the reason why we were getting a real estate professional is to give us the direction. And it, and it kind of sounds like we didn't get the direction. So I'm just trying to get clarity in a, in a memory boost.
Well, I mean, if you, if you remember, you know, we, we, you know, said we wanted to get direction and then, you know, we said we wanted, you know, to try to put three or four houses on there and then we didn't know if we wanted to disell. I mean, we just kept changing our mind over and over again. We, we've never really come to a conclusion in terms of what we as council had wanted to do with that property. We keep coming up with, I mean, even as, as recent as, you know, what was it, two months ago, you know, we, the, this idea of putting 10 homes on there, you know, 10 mini homes, you know, came up. So, you know, I mean, I think that's all in the past. I think, you know, I think we're doing the right thing, just trying to, trying to just sell the property and, you know, it's, we've got zoning ordinances to, you know, and whoever buys the property can do what they want with it, provided that they, you know, build within our zoning restrictions. So I, all I was just doing is, all I was saying is I understand what Lori is, why Lori is upset. But yeah, that's the past. And, you know, let's sell the property and, and get something built down there.
I mean, our, our response was organic. I mean, we, we were changing because we're trying to figure out how to, you know, make it work for the property and whether or not, you know, we were going in the right direction. It wasn't that we were stalling. I mean, we were actually trying to come up with a better idea and it just, it evolved into what it is now. It wasn't like we purposely did that. So I just wanted to make it clear there.
And I also want to mention, if you recall, there was an individual who made it like a tentative offer relative to the property. And council wanted to go ahead and have a professional representation so that it could be marketed and solicit bids, which could include that individual.
Right, and that, and that offer was, turned out to be well under the appraised value, if I remember correctly.
Yes.
Right.
All right. Okay, so, um, since I'm not hearing any objections, Scott and I can move forward with entering into the agreement with Ms. Hugh Smith. And we'll be back with you when that's.
Quick question. Well, how long is this? It's a contract, right?
Well, did you have any preferences? I thought they're typically like six months with the.
Okay, so that's what I was, I wanted to know what's the, is there a time limit on it? Or, you know, so no one gets confused if it kind of just doesn't move in a year?
I think that typically there's a, there's a timeframe for the listing agreement and I would, and I don't want to speak for Ms. Hughes, but I would suspect that that's what we'll do with this, this particular.
Yes, there is a timeframe on a listing agreement, typically six months that can be extended within the terms of the contract.
And that's something that the city would agree to about the extension of the contract? Not something that's automatically done or anything like that, right?
Ms. Garrett, I don't know if you're speaking to me. I can barely hear you.
I was saying that extension, is that something that is agreed upon with the city? Or, I mean, is not something that automatically happens, right?
I would say it would need to be agreed upon with the city of Lathrop to recommit to selling the property. And all of that can be determined if you want it to be automatic renewal or if you want it to be something that's discussed.
Okay. Anyone else have any other questions?
I, I guess the only other question I have, having not had the need for a Realtor in 30 years, is, I mean, is 8%, is that, is that standard industry commission? You know, where, where does that stand?
It's, it's within the standard commission rate for commercial properties.
Okay.
Oh, but this is, this is not considered commercial, right?
It's residential.
Residential?
Yeah.
And it should be 7%, shouldn't it be?
Resident, commercials are usually between the 7 and 10%. The residential is 6%.
Okay. So if we can adjust that, I would appreciate it.
Yes.
So, so let's talk about the other two coordinating real estate transactions. If you were thinking commercial, shouldn't that be slightly lower on the other two, two line items?
Remember, this, you guys will see this contract once, I mean, we haven't even drafted anything yet. So once we take a look at it, you'll, council will have an opportunity to go over it and make any suggestions before.
Okay.
Before approving it, so.
Okay, thank you.
And if I may interject quickly, the listing of the property would be $400 less.
Okay. I look forward to seeing that contract. Thank you.
Anyone else have any other questions? Okay, next up is the appointments. One is for the Board of Review. Trash.
Yeah, he skipped C and D.
Sorry. I'm so sorry. C, trash.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's me. I'm trash.
He said it.
Um, I, I asked Cheryl to put this on the agenda because, you know, as somebody who, again, as you, I think you guys all know, I pretty much walk the business corridor almost daily. Trash is getting to be beyond a problem, you know, along, along the business corridor. In fact, I actually came in to talk to Cheryl and Rami about it. And two days later, there was a post on Villagers where I think 15 or 20 people chimed in about how bad it is. Couple of examples, and, and, well, I think, and I think the, the part of the problem is, is one, I don't know how, we really haven't enforced anything with respect to trash, you know, all that vigorously. And then I, I really think a lot of the businesses just don't care. A couple of examples of that. I walked by a five-foot bumper every single day that was right in front of somebody's, you know, business on the lawn. They had to drive by it every single day. And so one day I was walking with the dogs and I just kind of dragged it over by their front door so that they would be able to dispose of it. And it's, that was a month ago and it's still sitting right next to it. I, I don't, I'm not going to say, because I probably, as an elected official, probably shouldn't have done that. But another example is we have another business who I called their corporate headquarters and left an anonymous message about how bad the property, how much trash.
More.
What's that?
Not so anonymous anymore.
About how, 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 how much trash there's been on, on there and how their, you know, their employees literally walk by this every single day. And I mentioned one piece, one piece in particular. Three days later, that piece was, was gone, but all the other trash in the parking lot is, is still there. Whiskey bottles, you know, car parts, all, all sorts of stuff. So, you know, I, I, I don't know what we can do about this, but one thought I had was maybe, you know, again, now that we have a full-time code enforcer that the DDA is helping us pay for, and this is all, and this is a DDA problem. You know, maybe we, we send out a, a letter to all the businesses in the corridor saying, you know, this, that, that, you know, trash is, is, has been a big problem. It's getting worse. Businesses aren't taking care of their, you know, their, their responsibility to, you know, the residents and the, and the, and their business. By leaving the, the trash there, you know, this is kind of a blanket warning. And at this point, then we now have a code enforcer who can actually enforce this. If we see, you know, longstanding trash, we're going to go straight to citing people because it, it is ridiculous how much trash is out there.
Okay, so didn't we do this before? Didn't we do a, a letter, something like that about trash?
We did a letter. It wasn't trash. It was, oh, I should remember it because I think I brought it up. What was it, Cheryl? It was?
I can't remember.
Bumper blocks.
No, it wasn't bumper. No, I think, I, I think it was.
Finet.
Yeah, it'll, 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 it'll come to me.
We, we did do a, a letter about parking in the right of way. And it kind of, kind of brought in the bumper blocks. That's the most recent one we sent out.
Yeah.
And I've sent a letter to, for corridor cleanups. We've sent letters to the businesses. I think it was last two years ago, maybe we said, hey, by the way, don't forget to clean up your stuff too. So.
Yeah, I, I just think we should just send a letter to them and, you know, suggest that they do a weekly cleanup or that they assign somebody within their, within their building, you know, or if they've got a multi-tenant building, you know, what, each tenant takes a week or something. But, you know, let them know that we're, we're getting serious about it. And if we see, you know, longstanding trash on a given property, we're just going to go straight to finding them. You know, issuing a citation because it's, it's ridiculous.
Okay, so that's what we'll do, send out a blanket letter and let them know and.
End of rant.
Thank you. Next up, the auditor, our key update.
The council had asked for the, an RFP to be drafted in regards to the auditor services. And we've been with Plankton Moran, as far as I can tell, for over 20 years. So I, I did a comparison of some of the elements that are included in other RFPs that I've seen from municipalities, mostly in Michigan. And councilmembers Ferguson and Sadiq had indicated they were willing to work with me in terms of drafting those specifications. So I just wanted to give you the rough idea of what's out there and then hopefully we can meet very soon so that we can get this language drafted and move forward.
Yeah, that sounds good, Cheryl. So I'll have time this week to review what you said. And then maybe, you know, you, me and you, Ian and myself can coordinate on getting together on this.
Yeah.
You have time this week, Ian, to look at it too?
Yeah, I think so. Let's, we'll figure out which day works this week.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
And then next up is now. The Board of.
Just saw.
The Board of Review and the DDA, is the Board of Review, which three seats are expiring. And it's been recommended that Leonard Alfred III, Regina Jones, and Rhonda Wilson.
Hey, Mayor Garrett, we're, we're having audio problems on your side.
I think that's Saleem. I think Saleem's got back.
Oh, is that Saleem? No?
Oh, maybe, maybe. Sorry, sorry.
Yeah, that's better.
I thought it was muted.
Oh, okay, sorry, Mayor Garrett.
Sorry, I thought I was muted. Sorry about that.
The people in my house will get yelled at.
Dare you impugn Mayor Garrett?
You said what?
I said, how dare he impugn Mayor, Mayor Garrett?
Just kidding. Anyway, any questions about the Board of Review recommendations? And if I'm not mistaken, and I'm sorry, is this, I should put this on my other, maybe I'll do that again. Because I can scroll back and forth. I believe all the people that are being appointed were already on the board.
No, I think.
What'd you say?
Leonard Alfred is currently on and my recommendation to you will be to give him the longest term, which be the one expiring in 2024. Then the other two, Regina Jones and Rhonda Wilson are new. And then you can decide which one of them gets the term for 22 and which one for 23.
Okay.
Hey Cheryl, quick question. Is Natasha logged off? I just saw that note. I don't know if she.
I am, so I think she's all set.
Oh, okay, okay.
So are we deciding that right now? So I'll take the recommendation for Mr. Alfred for having the longest term to end December 31st, 2024. My suggestion would be to have. Um, my suggestion would be to have. Regina Jones is the next one and then have Rhonda Wilson as the next.
And next one, do you mean Regina Jones for 2022 and Rhonda Wilson for 2023?
Say it again because I'm trying to scroll through this.
One, one of them has to be sent to a, 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 set to a term expiring at the end of 2022, the other one at the end of 2023.
So Regina Jones 23. And Rhonda Wilson.
Tw- 22.
Yes, that's my suggestion.
Okay.
Anyone want to um discuss that? Or are you just going to go with my suggestion?
No, I read, read their, read their applications. It sounds fine. So.
Sounds good.
We, we have, we have three applicants and all three of them are getting appointed. So.
Okay. So um seeing that there's no questions for, I mean, yeah, there's no questions, moving on to appointments for the DDA.
Now, this one's a little bit more complicated because it also is um related to the number of members on the board. So presently, it's a 10-member board. Um, the DDA voted and made a recommendation to city council to reduce that to nine members. So if you go with the nine members, then you have two appointments to make, one for a term expiring in 2023 to finish out a term and one expiring in 2025. If you decide to stay with the 10 members, then you'll have another um appointment for uh another term ending in 2025. And you have the applications from six people. One of them is Pam Schermeier, who was already on and she's up for reappointment.
And then, so this explaining, make sure I understand this correctly, is the two people that I recommend that if we only have nine people, and I know I'm looking at Suzie to make sure, since she's sent so many emails regarding this. Uh, it will only be Pam Schermeier and Mark Watts that I am recommending to the appointment. If you keep it with 10, then Shayla will be um number 10. Now, also, this was my question before about the alternate. Are we not doing the alternate anymore? Or is that something that we're going to suggest to go away with too?
No more alternate.
Okay.
And, and what was, what was the, the rationale from going from 10 to nine? Just the difficulty getting people to attend to the meetings?
Pretty much. Um, I mean, we've been, and very good. Um, in 2020, actually, they were, they were really good. I mean, remote meetings, it was a lot easier. Um, and you know, it was, it, it's difficult though, still to get a quorum. So this will help us get a quorum. Um, and the other thing is that it gives us an odd number. So if and when we ever have a tie, you know, we don't have to have a sticky situation.
Yeah.
So, but yes, Kelly, you are correct. If, if you choose to reduce the number of seats, it would be the two Pam and Mark Watts that would be.
All right. And so what, what's the recommendation for um Pam and Mark in terms of, you know, one term expires in 23, one term expires in 25? Which one for which?
I would keep Pam on till 25 and Mark 23. Pam on um the board.
Okay.
That was easy. No questions?
No.
Um, agenda items. This one, is there anything on the agenda that you would like to discuss, seeing that we have quite a few minutes? Or if you don't have anything, I can give you 15 minutes to refresh yourself, get some water, put some lipstick on, whatever you would like to do.
I'm, I'm not putting lipstick on. I, I do have, I do have one question. Um, we all did receive a letter from a resident um regarding a variety of issues. Um, has, has there been a response to that resident? Will there be a response? I know that our policy is that when, when a letter comes to all of us, just the mayor responds.
What letter are you talking about?
That from Karen Miller.
Well, I saw a letter that came to my mailbox. I did not open it yet because it did not have a um, a name on it. But I did see the letter that was sent to another council person. So now I know that the letter that I did not open yet, thank you. I, I get it. Um, so.
I mean, I guess, I guess at, 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 at a minimum, we should just at least respond and say, we got your letter and, you know, I mean, I don't know if we need to talk about a response or if there is, is going to be a response, but uh,
So I didn't, the one that I read, and now I'll, I'll go and read it again. I, I didn't see that it was asking for a response. I, I just thought it was a plethora of concerns and um complaints. So.
All, all of which we had heard before, I think. I don't think there was anything new.
Besides the last one, and I will, and I will do clarification on this one because I have been debating about it. Um, the reason that the food boxes stopped was not because of a election um situation um at all. What happened was the uh contract unfortunately expired in August at the exact same time. So the, the perception could look like it was the same. However, there were two more food box distributions um after the election. Um, so, but also the connection that I had with the um company that was delivering the boxes through the US, the, the federal government um expired and they did not get awarded a contract in our area. So that's why um we did not have a, another food drive. And the interesting thing about it is, you know, I, I'm approachable, send me an email asking why because actually Councilman Ferguson also asked me to do one and we had talked about it, trying to figure out how to have another food drive because I think that we all understand the severity of COVID. Um, and the thing about it is I did reach out in um full of transfer, uh, trans, they transportation transparency. Um, I reached out to some, I'm not willing to have Lathrup pay to get free food to give out. That doesn't, that, that doesn't make sense to me. So um I am working with a charter, actually Pastor Scotty, and we are trying um very hard to get something, to put, to put something together for food distribution. Again, here is where the other catch is, is that volunteers, um, that is not a small task, putting on a food uh distribution and, and everyone on this call can tell you because you, you've seen it, you've seen the, the stress level of it and um just trying to put it together and trying to put one together in the wintertime is going to be very interesting to me. But we are um trying it and I can't um, I'm saddened that one would think that that was just a, a political play because I don't think that I've ever come across that way as not caring about other people in, in, in a time of need. But salivi, that's, you know. Um, so was there something else that needed to really be addressed?
No, I'm just, just asking. I mean, because the, 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 all I'm, I'm not asking, I'm just bringing it up because we all received the letter and, you know, we can't, we're not supposed to respond. And I just wanted to make sure.
There is one, there's another issue.
There was another question in there that I found um on, that came up when I was going through our package. And that had to do with um the city manager's car allowance. Um, the city manager has had a car allowance as long as I have been on council. Um, so that is not something that we just decided to give out arbitrarily. So um that, if you want to go back and, and Pam, if you want to, I can't even remember. I mean, I know it was on and I started in 2011.
Kelly, they used to have cars. We used to give the bandager a car and we did away with the cars because of the cost and we started giving car allowances.
Thank you. Did the mayor get a car too? I'm just curious. Okay, so.
Yeah, we could find that old van that Chief Armstrong drove.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
I had that one. That's all they had.
Yeah, but there's, there's another part of that letter that needs to be addressed and the statement that uh was made that I um shared information about the city being uh almost destitute, which is inaccurate. It's an inaccurate statement. Um, I did not speak to Ms. Miller. Actually, the last two times I spoke to her, one was because of the Michigan first issue and Scott will verify that because we've always had discussions on that. That's number one. And I told her to, and, and Scott will verify. I told her to recuse herself. That was the first time I spoke to her. The second discussion I had with her was when her application came up with the DDA where it needed to be renewed. And I spoke to her about, um, after we made that decision, she asked me why and I, I explained to her. I have never, ever spoken to her about any conditions of the city. I've only spoken to her twice. That's it. I may have texted her once about Black Lives Matter, but that was it. I have not. And, and for her to make that statement that I, I made that statement, there's no way I would have made a statement like that. I think everybody on the call knows I would not have made that statement.
I love her, but I um got from the email. So um, I don't think that there's um, I didn't take it as there was a request for a response.
Right.
I think, I think what Bruce, Bruce's suggestion, just that acknowledging it, that you received it, I think that that's probably um, you know, because there were no specific action requests in the, in the letter. Uh, and then I, I don't, you know, first ask for the balance, but I don't know if it necessarily needs to be addressed, but.
Yeah, that, that's, that's exactly my point, Scott. Just thinking it needs to be acknowledged.
I think, I think so. I agree.
Okay. So I think we did. And uh, if there are any questions, please, please feel free to um uh, send another letter call or um email us. There.
Yep.
There any other um things that we need to bring up before um our meeting? Um, I did receive a text message that uh Councilwoman Stallings will not be um at the meeting tonight due to a heavy work assignment. Um, and she is preparing for another surgery this week.
Okay.
Guys. Um, anything else? Do you want to go on pause? Um, is this the same, this is the same link, link, right?
I thought we were supposed to hang up.
Were you going to have public comment?
Well, I'm sorry. Is there, is?
Oh, public comments, yes.
Oh, you know what? I do want to say one more thing. I went through the um, the police uh report uh or the information and I wanted to say good job to um Chief McKee because it looks like our overall what are they called?
Crime rate?
Rating.
Thank you. Um, has gone down uh over the years. So uh, congratulations to that. Do you have some questions for you when we go into the meeting? So I'm giving you that heads up.
Thank you.
Hey, Chief, you guys have been doing a great job. I just want to commend you guys on a really tough year in 2020. I didn't get a chance to say that at the end in December, but I appreciate what you guys have done.
Thank you very much. I'll, I'll pass that on to the crew.
Yep, yep.
So um, is there any um public comments?
No. I'm muting. Bang it.
Did we lose Kelda?
Thanks, you're happy. No public comment. Sorry, I was trying to unmute myself. It wasn't working.
Oh, no problem.
Okay. Well, then um, I'm looking at the log. And there was no questions or anything that you wanted to bring up regarding their agenda? Hearing none, then I will give you um 12 minutes.
So we're not hanging up? We're just pausing?
Nope, we're hanging up because I guess it's a different link.
Okay.
That correct, Cheryl?
Yes, caller. See if you don't have the link or the agenda.
Okay.
Everybody has to pack it before we get off the phone or get off Zoom. Everybody has it now.
Yep, I have it. Thank you.
Okay. See you all in a minute.